Six five.
Way not in, brother.
Hey.
Out.
I was out checking things out.
We call the meeting to order. Let the record show all the men are present. Um, this time we'll have the invocation by Mr. Chick and the pledge by Mr. Hippie. Please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Burgess, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Item three on the agenda is agenda public comment. Public is invited to address the board for up to three minutes each for a maximum period of thirty minutes. Only regarding issues listed on this agenda. Please identify yourself and the agenda item before speaking. Okay, moving on to new business, item four. Not recording. It's cat right now?
Yeah, it's not, hold on one second, it's not recording, I think. There was some technical difficulties that they've been working on.
Yeah.
And so I, I think she thinks it's live now.
Talk really loudly, because the microphones don't seem to be working.
Okay, we'll speak up there, because that should be green. Okay, what about this up here?
Okay.
The green thing is this, yeah. So. What about the rest of the audience? Okay, anyway, I'll speak up, we'll get.
Well.
Um, item four is new business. Uh, we're gonna table this, we're waiting on some additional information that was supposed to be here this afternoon, we haven't received yet, so we'll address that, uh, going forward at a future meeting.
Hey, Mayor, can we make a motion without effect?
Yeah.
Make a, make a motion to table item four A, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Hippie, second by Mr. Blackman, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Does anyone have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Uh, item E.
E. Okay.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item E.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hippie, second by Mr. Blackman, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries, item E.
Item, item E is, uh, is to approve a short-term rental, um, on Cleveland Avenue. And I want to defer that to the next meeting and, uh, to allow our city attorney to, um, clarify some things for me on accessory structure, um, qualifying for short-term rentals.
Okay, so I make a motion, we defer it to the next meeting. Second by Mr. Altamont, second by Mr. Papania, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Moving on to department reports, does anyone have anything to pull from the docket of claims?
Make a motion that we, that we approve the docket of claims, all expenses are appropriate and authorized by law and spread somewhere on the minutes.
Second, Altamont, second by Mr. Wade, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Motion carries, does anybody have any questions about the monthly budget report?
Make a motion to accept the monthly budget report.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hippie, second by Ms. Papania, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Um, next item is, um, lighting up the avenue. Uh, we have a quote from Sanji Brothers, that's wrapping the oak trees on Washington and some additional work at the Mary Street, um, so forth. Um, the quote is for thirty thousand twenty dollars. And, uh, last year we received nineteen thousand dollars in sponsorships to assist with that cost from the community. Um, does anybody have any questions about this? Okay, is there a motion to approve the quote from Sanji Brothers for lighting up the avenue? So move. Motion by Mr. Altamont, second by Ms. Burgess, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Human resources, um, salary comparison study to review of pay ban system quote from John C. Stennis Institute. Um, Will, you and Mandy want to talk about this?
As requested, um, we've gotten a quote from the Stennis Institute to do a salary study and develop.
Mandy, I know we had talked and I do want to stress that, uh, the Stennis does do City Summer to Ocean Springs, because in my first term, we got some information from them that, uh, didn't quite compare apples to apples. And they go outside of the state, um, I don't want to pick on any of our fairhoed places like that, okay?
Uh, just to clarify that, that's just a study for right now for us to look at, I mean, we don't have none of this really budgeted for, so we're gonna, we're just gonna look at this and see what, where we at compared to City Summer.
Right, that's correct, yes.
Uh, as a matter of fact, you could amend the budget as part of that approval as you're doing it, if not, I'll have to correct it later on, because it wasn't considered when we did the budget.
Right.
I'm talking about the.
Yeah, we don't even know what this looks like, so I mean, we just can't like get, we, this can't be a promise that whatever comes on paper is something that we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just paying, just paying for the study wasn't budgeted, is what I meant.
It's all just a study.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize the salary study by the Stennis Institute?
So moved.
That's by Ms. Burgess.
Second.
Second by Mr. Papania, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Uh, yep, thank you. Next item on the agenda is general public comment, the public is invited to address the board for up to three minutes each for a maximum period of thirty minutes, only two speakers will be allowed per each side of an issue, please identify yourself before speaking. Thank you, that's great.
Well, Dr. Moore, if I didn't know better, I'd swear you had a twin brother, because no matter where I was at, in the footpath, I turned around and you were there, I was just like, this. Yeah, exactly, I was like, where's Dr. Moore?
Anyone else would like to address the board?
Hello, Paul, Paul S. T. Smith, I also would like to say that you guys did a great job, the city worked together very well, um, very well organized. I also would like to mention that, um, enjoying the experience of my life, I just wanted to let you guys know the reason that the people that are members of State O L S, like other people that we've talked to at the actual, uh, festival came up to us and. The things that we're concerned about are that we don't understand who do you work for, because when we, when we read these various plans or, um, ordinances or zoning changes or whatever. It's never anything that any one of us can identify that we know of someone who actually asked for that. And so we're going, who is asking for that? We all come to a city center, there can be a hundred people there all saying, we don't want that, and then maybe we'll vote on it, but it's usually everyone except for baby, Bobby, or Kelly, people against it, but it's sometimes, sometimes, uh, ridiculous. Um, but it seems like you guys have some agenda going on, or you're voting for someone that you don't know who they are, because I can't identify anyone, and it would be really helpful if you would tell us, like, why, you know, why would you do it? Who told you we were like a hotel on toxic website on my drive between the register and the highway? Who told you that it would be great to identify several home systems in private areas? Somebody is, you're not just generating these ideas out of the, out of your dreams. Somebody is giving you advice and telling you this is what they want you to do. It's not even the residents that I've talked to, and I've talked to so many of residents, and we come up here all the time, every meeting there's one of us up here at least saying, please don't vote this way. And you hear us, and we're all pretty educated, experienced, understand the law, and all live here, for good rational reasons. It's not like we're just making crap up and saying, we don't want it. And yet, you guys don't give us any reason on why they're voting to what you do against what the residents want that are here representing our community. So, I think you need to think long and hard about that, because I'm telling you what it looks like, it looks like someone else is telling you the way to do, develop the city, what the motivation, direction of the city is, it is not us. So, who are you working for?
Mayor, I want to say something.
Let me, let me.
I want to.
Go.
Okay. Ellen, I, I gotta say, I don't work for anybody, and I don't think anybody on this board works for anybody. Comprehensive plans are not something that the city of Ocean Springs came up with, I mean, this is something that every city has, um, and as far as hotels and stuff go, those properties are already zoned for that. We didn't go out looking for a hotel, I mean, the guy found the property, it was zoned for it, he wanted to do it. So, I just want to clarify that, I know for a fact, I don't work for anybody, but I do believe that property rights are a big deal for me, and that if something's zoned that way, um, and the property's been there and it's been like that, then we don't, we just can't arbitrarily, strong-arm government, um, tell somebody, you can't use your property, and then end up in a lawsuit.
Okay.
I second what Ricky said, and I take offense to the idea that, uh, I work for anybody except the citizens of Ward Four, that's who I represent, three thousand two hundred plus citizens in Ward Four. I was elected twice, seventy percent of the vote twice. I go to these meetings and I listen to the people in Ward Four. And that hundred plus folks or thereabouts that show up, they do not represent Ward Four and the wishes of the people of Ward Four, and I think that stands for the city. But there again, Ms. Home, I take offense to what you said, I represent the citizens of this town, period, and I've done the best I can, and that's what I'll continue to do. I don't represent any developers, any contractors, or anybody else, and I find it's very offensive to you coming here and waste our time, running us down and talking about this town, which gives this town a black eye from a small minority of people. And so I'm gonna shut up before I get mad.
Alright, thank you. Uh, anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Yes, ma'am.
It's okay.
Uh, my name is Karen Morano, I live on Robbinsville Street. I have lived in Ocean Springs since nineteen eighty-nine, I have never addressed the board. I've participated in the Witches Ride, it's here, except, uh, the very first year. And so it's pretty much been a case for every Ocean Springs event, which has brought this marvelous popularity, with participants and spectators coming from other states. Our adorable and charming little town, certainly perfect setting for this magical tour event, allowing our family and friends and guests to party, kick off hours. Based on my ratings, my sister pegged down the share from North Carolina, my best friend from Tupelo pegged with her daughter from Idaho, and they all were walkers. I saw some who were coming to the event, and I'm sure their other states represented as well. My sister later told me she was looking forward to interacting with children. This year, uh, this year's grand prize is over twenty-eight thousand dollars for five local and annual welfare agencies, the organizers are unpaid volunteers. This year's Witches Ride could have been a spectacular family event, the golf carts were elaborately decorated, lots of hooks, the wagons and mikes were also very well decorated, and the Witches Ride and walking was fabulous. The participants spent a lot of time and money registering, preparing their golf carts, bikes, and mikes, as well as buying candy and robes and costumes, all in preparation for having a great time at a very cool event. I personally look forward to it all year, and I don't doubt a little. This year, however, walkers were yelled at and told to run regardless of their age, physical ability, or costume restrictions. Many, including several of my friends, were ultimately kicked off the course by the police because they didn't keep up with bike routes while they were pulling the wagon and handing out candy and costumes, which is obviously a ridiculous expectation. An officer tapped one of my friends on the shoulder and asked her to leave the parade because she got tied to a banner, when she told him she could just run and stay in front of the banner. The police officer told her, get off the route, take one more step, and you will be under arrest. I think I speak for most that there's a great appreciation for the police and what they do every day. However, it is unacceptable that our community members and our friends and family who are bullied by certain police, members of the police, as they attempted to have fun and hand out candy to children. The actions of the police created potentially dangerous situations from a safety standpoint, could have also caused medical emergencies. I feel sad, frustrated, and very disappointed about what happened. Many of the participants were participating for the first time, and some indicated it will be their last. After all was said and done, the Witches Ride was not the fun-filled event that it was supposed to be. There has been either discussion about the event being moved to Biloxi or Pasco, which would be extremely sad. This event is loved by the citizens of Ocean Springs, it displays our unique beauty and fun spirit, and it provides a financial benefit to local businesses.
Go ahead.
Um, I know for a fact that participants and spectators ate a drink at local restaurants and bars because I and my group of friends were among them before and after. The city of Ocean Springs needs to fully appreciate and fully support this distinct and special event for its citizens. And I would like to know, who ordered the police to act like they did? What was the rush?
Thank you. Um, on these, uh, special events, these parades.
We always do a recap with the organizers. We always do a recap with the organizers, and we're all gonna do that again. What works, what didn't work, how can we make it better? Um, so, uh, we're not trying to run the Witches Parade out of town, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna work through these kinks and make sure everybody has their own time. Good luck, everybody.
There was no, there was no direction.
There was no directive, there was no, there was no directive given, like that.
Kenny, turn your mic on. One, one.
There it goes, okay, anyone else would like to address the board?
Sorry about that, Mayor. Trying to pull it close.
I'm also not representing Witches Ride, but I've been to the four years, I've just been with my ex, and this is the first year I rode on the golf cart, my husband was the driver, first Witches ride. I was in the back, so could see what was going on in front of us, but it was a police officer, I'm sorry, that meant against traffic, and it was forced to put me along. So this was something I witnessed myself, and again, this is my fourth year Witches Ride. Um, in general, on the website, it says they raised sixty-three thousand, that's the second year's favorite door, but I believe it's ninety-one, but.
Five.
Yeah.
One more screwed up, a lot more than what I said.
Yeah, this year, that was just. Twenty, it was twenty-eight thousand this year and twenty-eight thousand last year, so for two years, they've raised fifty-five thousand, for sure. But, um, in general, when I live downtown, it's in twenty-twenty, my husband moved here in twenty-seventeen, my wife moved here in twenty-twenty, we love downtown. And my husband retired here, and that was one of the main events I was looking forward to, was participating in the Witches Ride, not only because it's a fun, charming event, it's also benefiting our local community and the youth. Um, the Witches Ride being downtown, things were a sense to me, because we do all the feline cultivation, that is a bit out of control. And since I've been here, in the four years that I've lived here, I myself have worked with the feline coalition, and you have. When we moved into our home, we inherited eleven cats, this was not my own, I did not ask them to come to my house, they would be like a clown car, underwear car, you could count them, eleven cats we inherited. So I felt like this was like a great opportunity for the Witches to work with the city of downtown, to help alleviate this feral feline population. Um, myself, I've always looked forward to it, to do, I've had a few times that I agree with all that, but in general, I really want this to be a good benefit for our local animal shelter, it's about the same, sorry, it's about the feline, feline coalition. And Jackson County Animal Shelter, I know this year specifically, since open every year, it's like the populations get more and more out of control. They have reached a level where they were, they've been able to, I think, I don't know if you actually know, but I know that's one place, but they have added more benefits too, so again, there is a real need, a necessity for this event, it's not just a fun atmosphere, which it is, all of that, and it's not just kids. I myself walked around with the witches, uh, the pub hall after, and many people came up to me, and thank you again, Kevin, Ricky, Bobby, you guys, Rex, we've had a lot of time out there, and I know Kevin, um, Bobby both helped the Witches organizers. At the end, take down the barricades, which was completely unexpected, and I hope the city can be split, the Witches Ride, because it really is a very helpful center for the city.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board?
The comments I made were about the hotel, I didn't, I wasn't speaking on the umbrella of the comprehensive plan, I thought, I said, comprehensive plan overview is completely a, a twenty-year plan that the city would follow that other cities across the whole United States have. So, all I was clarifying was that, if a, if a particular piece of property like is zoned for a hotel right now, and somebody were to apply for that, then as a, as a, as a governing body, we just can't tell them they can't do it, because somebody next door doesn't like it.
What's his current zone?
Yeah, it's a change.
It's already zone CH, isn't it?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, no, we're talking about the footage of Jackson. We're talking about the footage of Jackson, it, I don't know if it's zoned some type of commercial or not, I know it was a, an apartment complex there at one point. Right. Oh, but, oh, yeah, I'm not gonna say nothing about that property. The comprehensive plan is put together by the planners, uh, it goes through public hearings, um, those comments that you're, uh, addressing right now are well-taken at the public hearing, and then it's, you know, it's adjusted if it's needed to be adjusted. I think, I think the history of it is like commercial. No, but the history of it has been, it has been like commercial. I understand, but I'm just saying that's probably the reason there.
You did turn that into the public hearing that night, didn't you, that question on that particular piece of parcel?
Had the QR code that you could submit your concern, question with.
They will, they will take it, there's a lot to be addressed still.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, moving on to Mayor and Alderman's forum, Alderman Burgess.
Um, so Alan, the peer at Percy Muller Park, they started their peers on that, yes, thank you, um, do we have kind of a ballpark range of completion, I know weather permitting? Okay, so we'll push it out, because we're probably gonna get someone there, and we'll, we'll see, but okay, that's a good range. Um, I do have a property on Farrington that is an issue for me, um, code enforcement-wise, um, it has, um, so I need to make a motion to authorize Daryl to determine whether the Farrington property is in such a state of uncleanliness as to be a menace to the public health. so I need to make a motion to authorize Daryl to determine whether the Farrington property is in such a state of uncleanness as to be a menace to the public health.
Okay, you got a motion by Ms. Burgess.
Second by Mr. Blatton.
Like, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
In the post?
Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
I have a few things. Um, I want to thank everybody. October is a really busy time for festivals, um, considering cruising the coast this, this year. Actually went longer than three days, even though it was only a three-day road closure. It seemed like started on the Friday before. And then going into Halloween and all of those festivities and then, um, Peter Anderson Festival, so I appreciate all the overtime and what everybody's done, like Bill mentioned earlier. Um, I'm not gonna spring this on the board on a, in Alderman Forum to discuss, to do this tonight, but at the next meeting, I would like to discuss. There's been a lot of question about, um, short-term rentals. Um, and a lot of people don't know the history of short-term rentals. That, it came a long time ago when I was in the planning commission. It was, we, the short-term rentals never did come around because it was something that the city came up with. It was something that was already happening. But, um, there are some things that we have to look at with that and prop, and at the next meeting, I'm gonna propose that we put a moratorium on, on any of the VRBOs in the low density and high density areas that, and give us, and we're not, and not renew any, people that have, can have them at that point, but not renew anybody that drops off or give those permits to anybody else until we can come to some kind of conclusion, because now with the overlay district, we have Porter, the downtown, and the commercial. Um, I think that now there's a time we, we can look at that. So at the next meeting, I am, uh, just to give y'all an idea, some, start thinking about it, cause I'm gonna bring it up. I'm gonna put it on the agenda. And then, um, Alan, Guyton Place, they had a plumber there today, and they still can't figure out where that wa, they don't have any silker hoses. The, the, the landscape is shut down completely. Um, is there any way that we can try and, I mean? They say they don't have a sprinkler system that's wired in. Maybe you and I can go over there? The, the thing is, I know that before they redid all the landscaping in the front, the, they never go, I, I never knew they had any water issues there, but for some reason it's there now, and I'd like to get it figured out because not only is it a, uh, issue for them, but for people that are, you know, yeah. So if we can, um, okay, that's all I got.
Yep. The tree on Westbrook, you heard anything? Okay, um, there was one, oh, Lafitte is still leaking. I just wanna try to get it done before, if I even create something back.
I'm good, Mayor.
Uh, all I have is just a reminder that, uh, Cover Street will be closed at, uh, Davis Bayou, uh, Thursday or Friday for the final repairs and finished work for the sidewall projects. So just be mindful going that way.
Where's the party with all that stuff?
Yeah, they're, they're-
Blackman's House. Black.
I'll throw it. Um, I'll also, uh, next Monday, Veterans Day at the Vietnam Memorial, uh, we'll have the ribbon cutting for the new M-sixty tank that we placed out there a couple of weeks ago and, uh, probably got it all situated and set, so everybody try to come out for that.
That's at one o'clock.
One o'clock. Representative Ziver has sent you sites now on a jet. We'll see how long that, we'll see how long that takes. We're gonna get that next. Uh, I just wanted to give obviously kudos to everybody on the, and my boys to the Peter Anderson. Um, I saw, you know, there were, I saw firefighters out there, Public Works Police, well attended. I also wanted to thank Public, last week was busy out in, uh, Ward Six. Um, we had a foul blow along Riley Road, water pressure out in that area, it tanked. Uh, we had water shoot about fifteen feet near and Public Works was on top of it, had it fixed in what I thought was a very short period of time. Uh, thanks to the fire department for their quick response, uh, to the woods fire out just north of the Park Town area. Um, that could have gotten ugly quick, but thanks to y'all's quick response, no property damage, no injuries. Appreciate y'all. And just want to do, you know, since our last meeting, we've had two folks pass, um, uh, our yard man and Public Works Danny Harris. And I think some people missed it, former Alderman Kirk Holstead, uh, passed. Um, just wanted to send condolences to both families and thank them both for their service to the city. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Uh, real quick, uh, cause if somebody hasn't voted, y'all still have some time to get to the polls, but seven o'clock. Uh, the drappy, wrapping of the Christmas trees on Washington starts probably tomorrow or the next day. Please be patient with, uh, with the gentleman out there wrapping them. Um, Ricky's right, October's a huge month for us. Um, we started with cruising, cemetery tour, Spooky, Spooky Springs, Peter Anderson. Cemetery's tour this year was outstanding. If, if you happen to get out there, I'm sure you'd agree with me. But, you know, it, it does put a lot of strain on our, um, our public works, our police, our fire, uh, during that time of year, there's a lot of overtime hours and a time away from their families. So, uh, just be mindful of that. Um, I will be, Mike, I will be headed to Jackson with a meeting, uh, Friday afternoon with MDOT, and hopefully we'll get some resolution on where we stand with Dina Rose.
Dina. Okay. I look, I look forward to that. I look forward to that resolution.
I hope I have some good information for you. Um, with that, I'll call, uh, motion to recess until six PM November the nineteenth.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. DMP, second by Ms. Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alan.